Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. Would you please join me in saying "pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I would like a motion to ratify some warrants. The first one is a payroll warrant from 10/24/17 for $163,403.23. And another one, an expense warrant for 10/24/17 for $85,613.51. An approved expense warrant for 10/31/17 for $97,007.91. And another expense warrant for 11/7/17 for $353,231.93.
Do you have that motion?
Second.
Any discussion or any...? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we'd like to approve, ratify and approve some selectmen's minutes of 9/5/17 and 10/18/17.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And approve monthly reports and minutes from other departments, EMS monthly report for October 2017, and the Advisory Board Committee meeting from 10/12/17.
You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have some announcements. The Highway Department has announced that the lease will be picked up in the Village District of the town the week of November 20th. And then also, the Highway Department is moving forward to replace current street lights with LED fixtures. And we'll have more to follow on that. And then we have a reminder that a winter parking ban is in effect in Brookfield from November 15th to April 1st for all public ways in the town during the hours of 10:00, 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. There will be no parking on streets whether or not snowed as predicted. Anyone in violation is subject to a $25 fine. And now we're going to open up for our public access. Does anyone have anything for our public access this evening?
Can you come up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're on our agenda.
Yeah, but that's...this is something different. I just wanted to kind of let the public know that in the past, we've had a senior and veteran work-off program. We've had two slots in each where people can work off their property taxes. And we will be...it'll be...there'll be an announcement in the next issue of the Citizen explaining that we're opening it up for the 2018 year. And I just want everybody to know. And we will have applications at the Assessor's Office whenever they want to come in. So I had our new clerk, Patty, who's working out tremendous. I had her do a little study with all the local towns. So I just wanted to give you guys the results of where we stack up. Do you need a copy too, Karen?
No.
No, I think it's...
Okay.
They're...
Yeah, just...I'll get another one, Karen, if you need one. There you go. There you go, punk.
Oh, thanks.
The only two towns around that do not do it, participate in anything, is North and West Brookfield. Other than that, they're anywhere from...we funded for $2,000 all the way up to $30,000 in a couple of communities. So we are on the low end of the spectrum compared to everybody else. So I think we need to kind of see how many...see what the interest level is, and then going forward, see if we can't do a little something more.
So we have, what, four?
We have two veteran and two senior slots.
So altogether, we have four?
Altogether, we have four. Some towns just say, okay, we have 20 slots, and it could be senior or veteran.
Yeah. And I see that in my...
I think that's a better way to go forward. So I want to look at the whole program, and then sit down, and we'll figure out what's best going forward for the town.
That sounds good.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know that. So, any questions?
And while we're here, because of the success of the program, because of a certain experience by an individual, tens of thousands of dollars were saved by the town.
Correct.
Because we don't have to go out and buy an emergency generator or two.
Correct.
So I think, I mean, we've had tremendous success. And where we could find that kind of experience again, if it's out there, we would encourage it.
And I think one of the biggest challenges initially was people getting used to the program. One thing I think, I'd love to have you gauge the level of interest, what I'd also like to do is take a look at being a little bit more welcoming with regards to who it's open to.
Uh-huh.
Because I think when the program...
What did you say, Beth?
A little more welcoming with regards to who it's open to. Because I know of somebody who, in the first year that we had it, tried to apply, but because they'd only been a resident of the town for a year or 18 months, even though they were a fairly substantive property owner, we didn't actually allow them to participate in the senior portion of the program. So as you're taking in applications, even if people don't meet the time requirements, I'd like to understand how many people fall into that category, perhaps being newer in town that would be eligible other than that requirement.
But Beth, if I understand, that's right in the...that's right in law where it's concerned. You have to be a resident at least for five years in the community.
For exemptions, that's true. This is a town-run program, so I'm not sure.
No, for this one, though, I think you have to. I think you have to be, and I think you have to have at least five years residency in the community.
Is that in mass general law, or is that our policy?
I'll find that out, Beth, because we have to do more research on it.
But I remember that one. They had only been here in town a year on that one. And we refused to, because we did have a policy that I'm pretty sure was a five years that they had.
I haven't seen anything other than under the exemptions, which are in part funded by the state.
Well, I'm sure that there is something on that.
Probably.
Because that is why we did refuse that person. I remember that.
There are also, the majority of the towns set thresholds, income thresholds. And whether it's individual, or it could also be a couple. And if you're above that, and they're all over...they range all over the place with that. And I think it probably comes down to the percentage of seniors that are in a community.
Yeah.
So we'd almost want to get into a step...if we get to that point, you actually really want to know. Like, Holland has a huge number of seniors, whereas most of the other towns around are more, you know...but until you have the data, it's hard to really make a decision on that stuff.
So if you look at all those pieces, that would be great.
Right now, I can tell you that we have a lot of people coming in and saying, and I say, geez, well, all the slots are filled, sorry. And they've been filled since, you know, for the seniors, for those two slots have been filled since January last year.
Right.
So I know that there's a lot of...
Interest. When we first started this program, we didn't have anybody that was interested. So we had to go back into town meeting. We had to re-accept it all over again. And then we did. And I have to say, the seniors that we have had in here, they have been tremendous help to the town.
Absolutely.
They've helped out with filing and what they haven't done. And I know we have...we've had some that have moved loans, and it is a tremendous help to the town.
So what I'm putting together is an application, and it'll be multiple pages. They will have to, if we decide that we want to go with a...
Income threshold.
An income threshold, they would have to show the front page of their income tax return, the most recent one.
But isn't that in along with the...we'd have to look...
The exemptions you're supposed to show there.
I think you should. It falls...I don't know what chapter it falls under, but it's a certain chapter under mass general law. And I know we had to accept it at town meeting.
But everybody...every town has their own spin on it. There are no two out of all of them we looked at that are the same. They have different income thresholds. Some of them even are based on how many people are living in the house, up to eight people.
Well, why don't you do a search, you know, find out, and then...
Well, I want to kind of gauge the interest, but I don't want to put a lot of time into this, only to find out, hey, there's only four people that are registered.
So go ahead. Let's get the interest first, and then if we need to go back and retool the program in order to align needs of the town with the interest level of people, let's do that.
And then on the application will be a section, it's a, what are your qualifications? And if somebody comes in and they can, you know, rebuild a pickup truck, and it's gonna...we're going to give them $500 for 45 hours, and we end up with a $5,000 vehicle, obviously that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, right.
You know, so it'll...so they...it won't just be on, okay, the income thing. It has to be weighted, so what's best for the town.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
At any point, let me know if you get questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the information, and thank you, clerk. And that's...her name is...
Net, right?
No.
Who?
Clerk.
The clerk.
Patty. Patty. A net worked for a little while too, but she was one of the senior work-off people.
Oh, okay, got it.
All right. She got all the names. She's doing good.
Do we have anybody else with public access this evening? Is the whole crowd?
Guess it's my turn, huh? So Linda, you went here last time, the last meeting we had, and I had a...I want to give you an update. We discussed about the Verizon bills, that you say that you and you are the two selectmen are saying that I owe the town. So I do not owe the Verizon bills. And also, you said Clarence made the remark that I did not plant five trees. And I told Clarence that the trees were planted. So I'll make sure you...I don't know if they conveyed that to you, and, you know...
No, we have...we didn't talk about it.
Okay.
No, we haven't met since, so...
We haven't met since. We did meet...
Yes, that's why I'm...
We did meet with an executive session a couple of weeks ago, but we didn't discuss this.
Okay. So that's...I just wanted to give you an update that that's, you know, I'm not going to pay the Verizon bills, okay? And, you know, on a different note, I moved that house. I saved the town $15,000. So let's even...I don't owe the...I think it's $1,200 bucks. On another note, the way you're grinding me, I saved the town about $15,000 for moving that house. So I think you should, you know, have a little...a little bit of appreciation in there.
My understanding, Dave, when we first heard about, you know, how this...with the bill with Verizon, that there was an agreement that you were supposed to pay the offices that did the duty. And then I just investigated on it and come to find out that the police paid it. The police department paid it out of their budget. And it was out of, I forgot what, but it was the detailed budget.
The revolving account, yeah.
And it shouldn't have come out of that account. You had a...my understanding was that you agreed to pay these officers.
No, there was no...no. That's totally, totally false, Linda. I never made any statement. Verizon paid North Brookfield Detail the same day. They were there for the wires being down. There's a state law. If you look it up yourself, you can find a state law that they...the utility companies have to move wires. They do not own the air rights in the state of Mass now, okay? They paid...they paid North Brookfield Details the same day.
Well, they didn't pay the Brookfield Details because...
Yes, I know, that's why...
Our own police department paid.
Yes, out of the detail...
Out of the detail money.
Yes, I'm quite aware of that. I understand. That was on the finance board. I know all about that.
And I have the number now, with your permission, Madam Chair. I'll reach out to Ellen Cummings from Verizon, who stated that they never agreed to do that, and that they are not the ones who are responsible, that it's their practice for anyone who's doing a house move to pay for the details for the house.
No. Let me...let me set you straight. Let me set you straight there.
All I'm doing is reading what the lady from Verizon sent, Holly.
I know. Verizon spent three weeks up here moving wires. They had details all over the place for three weeks. Guess who paid those details?
Verizon.
There you go. And they also paid the details up in North Brookfield when the house was being moved.
Well, let's verify that with this Regional Director for Government Affairs, and then we'll get back to you on it, okay?
Yeah, you do that. So anyway, that's the update on that, Linda. So I'm tired of hearing people say, I don't owe this...right now, I owe this town zippo for money, nothing. I owe him nothing, okay? Your little witch hunt is going to cost this town big bucks.
Dave, it's not a witch hunt. You've got to stop...
Big bucks, okay?
You've got to stop just making vague references.
Yes, you have. You've got to stop making these threats, Dave.
They're not threats. I'm just telling you what you people are doing.
A witch hunt. You've got to...
It is a witch hunt. Everybody's...everybody comes to me and says, what's with the witch hunt? People out of other towns.
All right, Dave, let's stop. Get on to your next thing.
Next question. I had Clarence, I asked you a question on why there was four highway trucks in the highway bind. Now, we still got four one-ton trucks running?
I don't know.
You said you were going to find that out two weeks ago.
No, I talked to Cindy about that.
It's to be disposed. One of them is to be disposed.
Yeah, one of whom they were just taking...one of whom they would take the parts off of so that they could use it, the part, and then it was gone and demurred of it.
Okay, so now we have three on the road?
Yeah, there's only three on the road.
Okay, not four. All right, what about your...
There's four per at the barn.
No, no, before, when I spoke to you, there was four on the road. Okay, so now there's three on the road.
There's only three. There's only three on the road. One...
Correct, okay.
One was...
Now, you answered you...
Running wrong, and it couldn't get an inspection. I guess she was just to take parts off of. And then they're going to sell it.
All right, very good. All right, well, I spoke to you about a seasonal worker. In your beloved, dear bylaws, it states that we can only have a seasonal worker for six months. Now, if it's a calendar year, we're in violation. If it's a fiscal year, we're in violation. So I want to know why you three are violating the town bylaws, which you constantly talk about, oh, he's violating, or she's violating. And Beth, you said that I was incorrect, and it was based on money. No, it's not based on money.
Well, that's general law, which...
Uh, we're talking about Brookfield right now. Don't try to...don't try to water it down.
Is the person is considered...
That's the definition?
Right.
That's right.
So...
An employee hired for a specific period of time not to exceed six months.
That's correct.
So what's the problem?
Was...is the employee's...
So who are you saying has been employed longer than six months?
That's correct.
Who, Beth?
The seasonal worker we have down there. He started in April.
No, it's a different person. He started in July.
Kerry Kentucky started in July.
But we're still...you're still going...you're still going to go on six months? You're going through the six months. Six months is six months.
But it's her person. It's not her position.
Unless you keep changing seasonal workers...
Can we have the town accountant speak for a minute?
Yeah.
So the money is there no matter what. That's what it's voted on. You can't keep a particular seasonal worker longer than six months.
Okay.
So if you change employees, you're starting over again with your six-month timeframe.
Okay, so...
As long as your money's still there, you're still good.
Providing we don't have the same seasonal worker.
That worker could be hired and fired a month in between, a week in between. It doesn't...it doesn't really matter.
But if he's there more than six months, we're violating the town bylaws?
No.
No, we're not.
I have read the direct town bylaws, so I'm not going to vote that.
Yeah, it's very clear.
It's the definition.
But for Kerry, he was hired in July, so if anything, he might be coming up on six months this moment, but we haven't been in violation. So we will look into it.
It wouldn't be till January, right?
It wouldn't be, yeah.
Okay, so just...Linda, you be aware of that.
Okay, we are aware of that.
Because if it's the same individual from...if it was the same individual that started in April, then you are.
Well, I know, when I did check into this, though, one of them, if I remember right, Cindy said that it was one of them from a co-op, because you tried to say we had two people down there. And I had talked to Cindy about it, and one of them was from that co-op that we walked with. And that person is paid through the co-op, not by the town of Brookfield.
I saw money coming for that individual, I think you're referring to. That money was coming out of Bridge and Rails. I seen it in the warrant. Maybe Kerry, can you respond to that? There's some money come out of the Bridge and Rails account for whatever she's...
That's for signs. That's a sign's account.
That's a sign. He was probably...I think, now that you...I remember Cindy said he was down there making signs.
Yeah, that sign machine was actually purchased as part of the co-op.
The co-op.
The regional co-op. We maintain the equipment. The individual comes in and does the work for, I think it's still four or five communities that were making signs.
And that's how he's paid for the communities.
And if you remember in that conversation, they also said I saw him working up on the Town Common. And you're supposed to be...if he's working the co-op, he shouldn't be working for wrestling the roads.
There are several departments in this town. You can work for 10 of them if you so choose. It doesn't matter what department you work for. Your department is individual to your position. And if you choose to work for 10 different departments, you may work for 10 different departments. There's no law stating that you can't.
Right, but when the money's coming out of the Bridge and Rails, it does matter, Kerry.
I can't confirm or deny that the pay for payroll is coming out of Bridge and Rails.
Okay.
If that...that would come from the department that created that...
Right, because I...okay.
That's not me.
Because that's where the money was coming out of.
I cannot confirm or...
Okay, all right.
Okay, moving on?
Yes, we are moving on. Free cash. It's been two years now. It's...why we do not have this free cash certified yet?
This is something that we are going to be talking about, and our first thing on our agenda, we are going to be having an update by our auditor.
By what?
By our auditor. Justin Coleman is here tonight, and he is going to give us an update on how the audit is doing.
And just...I just want to add that just because you're not hearing about it in every town meeting, doesn't mean there's not movement. There's movement in this direction every single day.
Yes.
So just that it's not brought up at a meeting every month does not mean that there is not activity. There is activity. We are here with an update today.
And they've been working very diligently on this, Dave, and they have...
Okay.
Every day, we're cooperating. And we're getting all the right proper paperwork handed into us.
Okay, that's all good. That's good and fine. I understand all that. But still, it's been two years.
Two years since we got it. We had...we had...
Free cash certified, talking about...
One year.
One year.
And we wait...and when is your next...when are we going to have our next special meeting on this free?
If you would wait for our updated minutes for all of those questions.
If you wait, he is going to...Justin is going to give us an update on what's going on.
On the free cash?
No, he's going to give us an update by the audit update.
Okay, all right, good. That's good to know. I'm glad you're doing that, okay. Why is our Channel 194 been off for almost three weeks? Nothing's been playing.
I can't tell you. Sharon, do you have any update on that?
You had Cindy give me about it, Dave. You could have fixed it if you told me.
Well, I kind of got off that roll of talking, you know? I've done it too many times. I just...it's been three weeks, so I just figured I'd ask.
I can't cure a problem. I don't know anything about it. I don't watch cable TV.
Okay. All right, so who should...who should a resident call if it's not playing, you know, in a length of time?
They should send an email to the Global Access at BrookfieldMA.us.
And how's...
Or they can leave a message with me if they have my number.
Okay. And how soon does people pick up that email? If they email that down to...does that go down to the studio?
They should have an email daily.
Okay. All right, I will pass that on. Okay, good. I think that's...Why do we have a police officer in this room every time that you're here, Linda? And when you're not here, there's no police officer here?
Well, the chief had called me today, and he wanted to know if we'd like a police officer here this evening, because if anything gets out of hand, if I have somebody that gets a little, you know, out of hand, and I speak to them, and they don't listen, and tell them that I can have them removed, this is why we have a police officer here.
And when have we had a situation like that in the past, that we have to change the policy of taking a top-notch, high-paying police officer off the streets of Brookfield when he should be out patrolling our roads?
Proactive. Proactive move.
It's a good...I think it's a good move.
Proactive?
It's a good move to have somebody here, Dave, just in case something happens.
Must have been one of the days you missed school.
So when does that...something happen, though?
We never know from meeting to meeting if something's going to happen. Somebody come in here and get out of hand, and they don't want to listen to me. And so we have an officer here, and he'll remove that person for the meeting.
But the...
It's all plain and simple.
Last couple of times when you're not here, the officer's not here.
I...I don't know.
We didn't have one...
Madam Chairman, with the current situation in the US today, having someone here is probably a good idea.
It's a good idea, because you never know, Dave, what can happen in meetings.
Well, we didn't have one last night. We had a pretty, pretty good meeting last night. There was no officer here.
This is a selectmen's meeting. It's not just a...what meeting did you have last night?
The ZBA Board.
I mean, it's up to the ZBA.
I mean, that was more exciting than the selectmen's meetings ever been.
If the ZBA wants to have some...somebody, they could request one. And we're just requesting it for our protection. With everything that's been going on across the country today, you don't know what can happen, even in a small community.
I think if you're referring to that type of incident, I think by the time, I think it would be all over and done before the officer could do anything, Linda, if you're going to talk nonsense like that.
You should talk to the people who, after their town got annihilated over the weekend while they're church.
In their church, something...
Now, you're...this is not...we're talking...we're talking a civil meeting, a civil meeting here.
All right, Dave, let's move on. We have quite a bit here on our agenda this evening.
Okay, I'm almost done here. All right, so you're going to discuss...oh, what...number nine, you're going to be discussing that in length?
Nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to discuss that.
Because we're spending a ton of money with attorneys in this town, so I just...okay.
Yeah, we're going to discuss that, all right.
All right, very good. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I see...have you all finished, Dave?
I am finished.
We can move to the rest of the...
And I appreciate you listening to me.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I see we have a boy scout, and probably his mom, they're here. And I think we'd like to have them address, because, you know, they have to get home and, you know, get ready for bed. And we don't want to keep them up here too late. So if they'd like to come up, they're very welcome to come up and address our meeting.
He's around.
Oh, that's okay. He can stand back there if he wants to talk.
Down, buddy.
And he can give his name.
Joseph Waterman.
Yes, hi, Joseph. Nice to meet you. I'm Mrs. Lincoln. This is Mr. Snyder, and this is Ms. Hoffman.
Welcome.
Welcome to our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And what are you here for this evening?
I'm working on citizenship and the community merit badge, so I have to go to a town meeting and write down what issues are and like, what, like, people want...
Excellent. That's good. That's a nice thing for a young man like you to have to come to a meeting and realize, you know, what is actually going on in our meetings. So you mean like a selectmen's meeting here tonight?
Yeah.
So how many does he have to attend?
Um, yeah, just one.
Just one? Yeah. And you just...what we can probably do is give you our administrative assistant. Karen can give you a copy of our agenda, and it will tell...
Don't be that way.
And we have one, and, you know, and she can...and you can see, and you can tell what we discussed in our meeting this evening. So it's nice to see a young person up here interested in our meeting to earn a citizenship badge. So I'd like to thank you very much. Good wishes on your badge.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, our next here is I have a...I have a press release to read. The members of the board's selectmen have received inquiries and in some instances complaints about certain properties owned by David Holcraft. In light of these ongoing inquiries, the board wishes to inform the public that it has caused several enforcement actions to be commenced. Sue is currently pending in the Massachusetts Land Court Properties at 26 Allen Road, 90 Lake Road, seeking these properties be cleared of open-air storage of junk, salvage, and debris at properties. We are scheduled for a pre-trial conference on November 28th, 2017, and a trial by the end of 2018. Aside from these enforcement actions commenced by the town, the board acknowledges that Mr. Holcraft currently has a law...currently has a court lawsuit against the town, challenging the determination by the zoning board of appeals of the special permit issued in 2003 for his property at 6 South Maple Street, has expired. Town council has filed a motion to dismiss this complaint. Given the current pendency of legal action involving Mr. Holcraft and our property owned by him, the board is not at liberty to provide much more in the way of details about these matters. Nevertheless, the board felt that it is important to inform the public that this is taking legal action within the town authority under the law. Turevity condition is deemed unsafe or unsanitary and/or in violation of local bylaws or regulations. So this was just a lot...we've had an awful lot of people. We get calls there at the town hall, and I'm sure the other two have had people just...
Private inquiries.
Private inquiries. They'll stop us on the street, and they'll ask us what's going on. So this is what I wanted to do tonight, like a press release, so people know what is going on in the community with this lawsuit.
Your cones are running wild, Linda.
What?
I said your cones are running wild.
Okay. Our next one here on our agenda is Justin Cole for our audit update.
Good evening. My name's Justin Cole. I'm from Bay State Municipal Accounting Group.
Nice to meet you.
So we've been working underway on the closing of fiscal 2016 and 2017, and the subsequent filing of the free cash for those fiscal years. So this process started back June 8th with a meeting with the Department of Revenue here at the Brookfield Town Hall.
I don't know where I attended that.
Yeah, and from there, the process that was outlined was approximately a 90 to 120-day engagement to work on FY16 and 17, followed by the filing of FY16 around the Halloween timeframe, and then certifying the 2018 recap with the town accountant, and then finally filing the FY17 year-end close for the town. So the status on those things are, the preliminary numbers for FY16 have been submitted to the Department of Revenue. I'm going to have a follow-up meeting with them on Thursday to review the final operating results. Once those are accepted by the state, we'll move on to the FY17 year-end close. It's an ongoing process, so that looks to be probably another 30 to 60 days. Our original timeline had all the filings and the engagement wrapping up by around the Christmas holiday. We're generally still on that same timeframe, give or take a week or two, so it may dip slightly into the beginning of January. But overall, the town has been making fantastic forward progress in, you know, being engaged and getting these issues resolved and moving the ball forward to, to get the free cash done. So Carrie has been instrumental in providing the information and helping to facilitate the process. I know she provides you with regular updates, you know, on the internal process.
She has, and she's been present.
Yep. So, once 2016, 2017 are completed and filed and accepted by the Department of Revenue, they will issue you a combined 2016, 2017 free cash number. It's our anticipation that they will take their time in certifying the final number, so, you know, in a normal year, you know, you would expect that from the time of submission to the time free cash comes back is maybe five to 10 business days. I would anticipate maybe upwards of 30 days to get the free cash back, for a, for a number of reasons. One, from the scope of the work that's gone into reconciliation and the filing, because you're, you're doing a double certification this year, 2016 and 2017. They will be sure to do their due diligence to, you know, make sure that, you know, all the work that we've done, and all the work that the town has done, is reasonable and, you know, and meets their internal audit requirements. So I would say tentatively, your FY17 free cash would be back to you sometime in the month of January.
Well, the way I, I feel, Carrie and I had talked, I think it was last week, and we went over a lot of the different things that, you know, that we had passed over. It didn't really come to about $54,000. It was really nothing that was really pending that we needed to go out and get it today. So the way we had discussed, the two of us, we didn't, we think that it would be fine if we went into a town meeting, probably sometime in January, because I wouldn't wanna go into one right now and do any raise inappropriate. And we should be able to set our tax rate, right, Justin?
Correct. If you don't have anything that needs to be raised and appropriated as far as your town meeting goes, then your tax rate should be ready to
Yeah, because the few things that we did take out, I remember the Department of Revenue had said when they were here, if we did need things, we could take it out of free cash, we could take it out of stabilization, with the understanding with the town meeting people that we would take that amount and put it back in when it is certified. And this is what, I mean, I proposed to do, and I hope I do have, we have the support of the rest of the board and the people here at the community. And so I think that there's nothing all out of proportion that needs to come up.
The one potential challenge that we have, and I don't think it's insurmountable, is that we did not adjust our police budget due to the fact that we're still in contract negotiations. So the one thing that we would've had on a fall town meeting that would've had to, well, at least by, by standard practice, okay? So it doesn't have, by law, it doesn't have to come out of raise appropriate, okay? But the, the one area where we do have some financial risk is the fact that we did not adjust our police budgets against any proposed salary increase, cause it was all left level funded pending resolution with regards to what the contract looks like. So where that would put us in a, a little bit of a position is that we might have to, if we do our town meeting after the first of the year, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of it is that any of the adjustments would have to come either from stabilization or from that free cash that just got certified, cause it would be available to us, although typically we don't do, cover operating expenses from free cash. There's no law against it for all intents and purposes. So if we needed, as a one-time deal, because of the timing of all of this, to do that, then there's nothing that necessarily constrains the town from addressing that, those monies that way. Okay. So, so we don't, so, so we don't have an issue?
No, we don't have an issue.
No, I was, exactly. I'll back up exactly if that's, that's said, then once, if we have the town meeting in, I mean, you could have it at the end of the month now, November, nothing, you know, be no raise appropriate.
No, but we don't wanna do it.
But we're saying that we'll wait until next year.
But what I was gonna get to is, it could be, but even if it was, I'm saying, because there is no, whenever you set it, if there is no town meeting, then we have to set the tax rate. So you could have it in the middle of November or into January. At this point, it's not gonna affect
Yeah, won't affect the tax rate.
That's all I was gonna say.
So no, we, and the way I, I feel, speaking to Carrie, I think it, things can hold off, and I hope that the other board members agree with me. Because it's really nothing that we really have to raise inappropriate at this time.
There's nothing that's There's nothing that can't wait another 30 to 60 days.
Yeah, wait a few months.
So just the question on setting the tax rate, what do you think the appropriate timing might be? Because again, we've had some good success this year in growth and in collections, and so the question
I think the first thing I would like is something from the board that says that we will not have a town meeting during this calendar year.
I, I will I'll make a motion that we not hold our town meeting until we've certified our 2017 free cash.
I will second that motion.
There you go.
So in that case, I could stop working.
Yeah, you can stop working.
There's numbers that need to come from Carrie. There's other things that I haven't done much on, so.
Oh, and any more discussion on that?
Well, only, I'd, I'd encourage them to move forward with that, because I think that there's some good news there that we ought to be sharing.
We should be, yes.
And it's also, the sooner we can, going forward, a year from right now, if we can do the special town meeting in October, and then work on the tax rate in November, we get a lot more help from DOR, because about 50% of the community is waiting till the last couple of weeks, and you're tired to get any help from them. They, they know, but that
I know that, I know that, Alfred, over the years of being here.
So the sooner we can do this, and we pretty much know in June what's gonna be on the special.
Through the chair, what I'd, I'd like to ask of the accountants is, how do you feel in the go-forward? So we've, clearly, we're, we're working through, we've gotten some good, in essence, reconciliation of our accounts, by understanding that this process was also gonna include restructuring that better aligns us with the state requirements for the town structures. From a, from your standpoint, and having kind of right, heard of the process from the municipal side along with our, our consultant here, do you feel that unlike our, our previous practice where we tended to not even start filing our free cash until probably February or March the following year, that we can actually comply with the state calendar? We're supposed to be filing it like September, October?
I, I think that you guys have figured out I'm a little anal on the way that I operate, so
I was hoping you were gonna go there.
It's killing me that it's not, that I'm not capable of doing this right now.
Okay.
It really is. But what I've been working with, when Justin sends me information as to what I should handle by a certain date, I have actually a timeline set up for myself now, so that moving forward, I just plug in what should be done, you know, at a certain time of year, so that already the month or two ahead of that, I'm already thinking, okay, I gotta start working on this. I gotta start working on this. So I am developing my own habits that will help me to be successful in the future. A lot of that was not, there was no direction really provided when I got here. It was kind of, here, this is what you do, and, oh, by the way, you have to do this at some point, too. You know, not by any fault of anybody else. It's somebody who was here and, you know, wanted to be out, and I get that. But I have a lot more structure for myself this year. A good, solid year of, of these transactions under my belt, another year moving forward of filing these documents and being more familiar with them, understanding what they're actually saying. And now that I can follow the numbers where they belong, it's a lot easier. Because trying to figure out what somebody did for the last 10 years, when they were doing it completely differently than I could even fathom, I just
Like somebody was doing it like old school.
Yeah.
Carrie's coming in with the, with the newer methods to go, and I, I would like to commend Carrie for, for the work that she has done here for this town. She came in, and she's done wonderful, and she knew we had problems, and so that she, she got in touch with Justin, and she had, got approval to hire him to get all the books written and reconciled.
I've been advocating for a number of years that we bring somebody in like this in order to get this finally right.
And she, she's done excellent job here for the town.
I think it's all gonna come down to procedural at the end of the, at the end of the day.
And now that she, that she knows what's going on, like she just said, she knows what month, what day, where she has to put all of these things, so that she can get everything in order for another year.
Not only that, but it's gonna sound strange, but marrying the transaction from department to department. I was only looking at the accounting portion of it. I didn't understand
The flow, the flow through the whole process.
Yes, exactly. So I may have been doing my end, but where there was no treasurer at the time, maybe that didn't get done, and so that's kind of where we're at.
And we have, and we do, we have like a new financial team, and you know, they're all, all working together for the same goals.
How are we doing with getting the virtual systems better integrated across the departments?
We are all going to training tomorrow.
Oh, yay.
For the whole day.
They're all going to training, yep.
Sorry. Little things make me happy.
Yep, they are.
I'm kind of a figure-it-out-on-your-own person. So over the last year, I have learned a lot about our computer system, just by poking around, but that's my nature. So somebody who isn't comfortable fiddling around in a computer program is only gonna really do what they've been shown how to do, because they don't have the confidence to say, hey, if I touch this, I don't know how to fix it.
Right.
You know?
Can always pick up the phone and get reversed it by Call and Vada.
Right, but a lot of people aren't confident to do that, you know? So I think having Lonnie in the treasurer's office is open to really, really learning how to use the system. She and I have been poking around in her side, learning her side a little bit. It's definitely helping me to realize what the other departments are doing as well, cause now I'm looking at the whole puzzle, not just my tiny piece.
And I had talked to Lonnie today, and she asked my permission, if it was all right, if she went to anything that she saw that would have any help with her office, anything financial. I said, of course. I said, go ahead with it. Cause I said, this is how you're gonna learn, and I say she networked with people, and I said, you know, networking is one of your most important things you can do. You just pick the phone up from another treasurer, from another community, and they're willing to help.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff through Mass Municipal and those, those meetings, they got a bunch of financial
Oh, yeah, she's been getting them on. So she has been, she's been, she wanted to know if it was fine. I said, you go ahead, and you do what you have to do, learn your job, and so you can do it better. I think she's coming along good, and she's hoping possibly, maybe that Keith might be able to stay an extra month with us.
One thing that would be nice is, and this should be across the board, not just if the treasurer goes to training, but it's kind of like when I went to that selectmen's, Mass Selectmen's meeting and sent notes back of the trip to other people that are in similar, you know, job fields, even if it's different. I mean, as the accountant here holds very different from the treasurer, but it wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing if she goes to some of those trainings, if she would share her personal notes with the rest of the financial team, because there may be some stuff that's pertinent to
I'm sure she will. I'm sure that she will out discuss this with her, too. You're gonna be gone tomorrow, so you'll be back Thursday?
Yep.
I'll, I'll talk to her about that on Thursday.
That'd be great.
And on another note, we did actually have our first financial team meeting, too.
Yes.
This past month, which was, I think that was a good thing to kick off.
Yeah, and that's something, didn't we talk about having it, I forgot what the date, but certain time in each month, we would have it. And so that it wouldn't have to be a posted meeting, so that I wouldn't, you know, attend it with them.
Great. If there's ever a month there's a conflict, let me know, and I might be able to attend.
Yeah, we're getting progress, and we're happy, and thank you, Justin, for coming on board and helping us out with all of this.
He's still smiling. That's positive.
So, so
I give a lot for that rain in the streets.
So, well, even after you're done with the audit, I mean, if there is any little things that you can help the financial team with, you'll be available to give them a hand?
I will be, and, and if you recall, you folks also voted to participate in the regionalized financial processes grant as well, so, you know, hopefully that process closes, I believe it's next week, you know, so hopefully we'll know one way or the other back on that as well.
Okay.
And so that would be, that would provide funding, you know, outside of the tax base
That's for, it's an act for a whole year.
For an entire year.
Yes, that's good.
Of continued support.
Can I ask Justin and Carrie, if we were to try to move a special time meeting next year into October, does that make sense? Is there any reason
Are you challenging me?
No, I'm making sure we're on the same I just wanna make sure we're on the same wavelength, so we've
If you wanna push for an October, I'll do everything in my power.
I mean, the end of October, it could be. I mean, I just, I just wanted to make sure that what I'm thinking is what makes sense.
What, you mean for, for, what, for meetings?
Is it conceivable?
Yeah, it's very doable.
Without the years I have been around, I don't, the earliest we have ever had them is probably early November.
Okay.
We've never actually had one in October.
That's a challenge.
Are you thinking, just to see the eye going down? So that's your challenge. Well, if you think you can get things ready for an October meeting, we'll go with an October meeting.
Right, and Halloween.
Get all the goblins out for the town meeting.
Okay, so, so we're very happy with what, what's come up, you know, what's coming forward for us, and I thank Justin, and I thank Carrie.
Appreciate it.
And I appreciate all the other, you know, the rest of the financial team
The other departments that
With all of the, you know, cooperation that they have given that Justin needs, and, you know, they've come forward with everything they can and answered all of the questions that they have. It's progress. We're moving, moving all towards the right way, in a positive way. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Our next on the agenda is the solar contact review, and I think that is out.
Back again.
Back again.
Okay, not a huge, you know, not a lot on this. I just wanted to let you know where it is. As you know, they, they came to me about putting, what, you know, to put together a, to work with them to put together a contract, but it really goes through you, through KP Law, back through me, back to you. So where we are right now is, I've talked, I talked with Rick Holland, I believe, yeah, Rick Holland from KP Law.
Oh, she did get somebody.
Yep, and, and he was really good about getting right back to me. Had a great conversation with him, and he recommended that we work with Roy Bishop, who we normally use anyways for, for assessing. So I've spoken with him. We have to continue. He's, he is getting, he works with multiple communities. My concern is I don't wanna leave money on the table. I wanna make sure that we have a valid, you know, a
It's fair, fair reasonable.
Well, we organize, well, we, yeah, agreed to a similar and fair rate. Yeah, you don't wanna undercut anything, but I also don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna go on the high end, but we just don't wanna be, we just don't wanna leave anything out there, because whatever we set, I feel on this one, is gonna set a precedent going forward. And so I wanna make sure that, and you have to compare apples to apples, because there's some towns, like our other one that we have here, there's also an energy buyback or something, so it's not apples to apples. You can't compare the two. But I just wanna make sure that we have other ones that we're comparing to. I know that the guy from Clean, John Cluwin, from Clean Footprint, was pushing to get things done by the end of the year. I don't feel comfortable having somebody push us to make any kind of an agreement. They can go ahead and build. There's a lot of building.
This has to go before town meeting also, doesn't it?
Um, I don't believe so. It's a It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Oh, I thought for taxes, payment in lieu of taxes, I thought that they have town meeting approval.
No, I think what they're trying to do is, they don't want us to come out and say, "Okay, the infrastructure is worth 1.5 million," we want it to be, they don't wanna be taxed on 1.5 million. There really is no, if you look at the solar on your house, because it's primarily for your own house, they don't tax it, so...
Have you checked the Mass Municipal Association, a few of the other entities? Because I think there's a bunch of, at least information papers out, I'm not certain if they're from the state through like the DOR, or whether it's through...
There's all, there's all kinds of stuff, there's regional stuff, yeah, I've read, the more you read, the more you realize, the more is referenced.
Yeah.
And then the more is referenced, you kinda get overwhelmed, so...
Do you want me to dig into some of that?
I kinda wanna, I'm gonna work with Roy, and I'm gonna see if we can't come up with a, uh, a ballpark figure based on maybe, you know, half a dozen similar, you know, installs that have gone in in the last twelve to eighteen months. And then from there, the thing that the developers seem to be saying, the people that are installing these, geez, Mass hasn't given us all the credits they used to, so we have to drop what we give you. But what you have to keep in mind with a pilot is, it's a payment in lieu of taxes, so it's a tax that, it's being assessed to the installation. It has nothing to do with what the state is reimbursing, or how sweet they're making the deal.
And there's a couple of other things to be very aware of in this industry, and there's probably a lot of entities out there who are trying to cry poor mouth about the solar credits right now. But, um, I'm on some of the email traffic around the solar credits, and they were talking about extending and expanding the solar credits pretty significantly, because most people aren't really realizing that Yankee is gonna have to, by law, shut down in about, I think it's eighteen months or two years, and the market in New England currently does not have sufficient generation to manage some of these nuclear plants going offline. So, there's, there's some pretty significant, um, market forces that are gonna make this a really sweet deal for the people who are building the solar, um, areas today. And actually, Mass's grant program, I think, is expanding, they're looking at expanding it, particularly if you do offline storage as part of the solar installation. So if you do offline storage, you get like a really significant bump of funds back from the state, because what they're looking for is for these facilities to be able to feed back into the grid at night and level up. So, anybody who's trying to like cry, "We're not gonna get enough benefits from the state," you know, "Be nice to us on our taxes," is trying to take advantage of them, assuming we're not aware of both the market forces and what the state's doing right now from the standpoint of incentivizing these projects.
And keeping in mind that it's a twenty-year agreement.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so, so, yeah, we need to make sure we do it appropriately, so thanks for the due diligence.
Yep, not a problem.
For getting the right people involved.
Well, we'll find out, wait till we get to the end of it, then we'll find out if we got the right...
We at least, we're trying, we're trying to do our due diligence.
Yep, we're trying, we'll educate ourselves the best we can, and we'll, and we'll make, hopefully, the best possible agreement that we can for the town. And again, that way it sets us up going forward, that we can say, "Okay, here's our boilerplate, this is what, this is the contract that we just signed with these folks. You wanna do something similar, this is where we're working from."
Are they providing you some of the details, like what their efficiency rate is gonna be, and what the duration of the project is?
No, no, that's part, that's where we're going with this, to get an idea of what the actual infrastructure, what do they value it at, versus what do we think it is, and do you do the income approach, do you do the cost approach, there's different ways to do it, um, but I wanna make sure that, um, everybody's gonna fudge figures, so you can't...
Everyone's gonna try to manipulate it, make it look...
Exactly, they're gonna make it look like it has no value, and so, we're just gonna...
I've noticed this past week, they're starting to progress up there, to, you know, get the panels and everything, you know, and...
Ultimately, it'll be two separate ones, ones on fifty-two, ones on fifty and ones on fifty-four.
I know, but they're doing work on both different parcels, I've noticed in the last couple of days.
Right, but it's two separate farms versus one big farm, I don't know if that makes a difference.
Now, basically, though, where is that gonna really generate, will it help us out around here, or...
So, it'll feed into the grid, and it'll just be power that's available.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just under a megawatt, which is, it's probably about, um, forty percent bigger than the one that's at, uh, now, maybe fifty percent bigger than the one that's on the, um, the landfill.
Down here, the landfill, okay.
Good size, it'll be, I think it's good, like you say with...
Yeah, yeah, given the fact that we're gonna be losing some sources of power in the next few years, it's important that a lot of these projects happen.
So, thank you, well, for standing on top of this.
Okay, that's it, I'm done for tonight.
Awesome, thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay. Our next one on is to ratify, um, the purchase of the Crown Victoria that was, um, the police chief's, fire chief, I mean, his old vehicle, we put it out on Unibid, and we have, we just want, it was sold already for four hundred dollars, and we just want to entertain a motion to ratify this program.
You have a motion in route.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Our next one is a letter request from, um, from, it was from Carrie Vonhold, who lives on Upper River Street, she's asking to be appointed to be a member of the Brookfield Recreation Committee, and she says, in the past, she's, um, served on the Brookfield PTO, and she's been the president for two years, and she's volunteered as a softball coach, she's assisted the recreation committee, she started an adult co-op softball league, and she said she would appreciate the opportunity to further assist our committee in serving on the Brookfield Recreation Committee. And she said, "Thank you for your consideration." So, uh, so I would like to, Jeff Landine is in the co-op piece in this, so I'd like a motion to appoint Carrie Laugh, second. Okay, all in favor? Yeah, she'll be on until June thirtieth, um, twenty eighteen. Okay, our next one on here is a resignation, and this is one that I kind of regret seeing happening, because he's done a wonderful job for us here in the town. This is from Brian Oxman, he's school committee member. He says, "Dear Mr. Siri, I'm writing to inform you that I am officially resigning from the Brookfield School Committee following the December of twenty seventeen meeting. I would like to request on behalf of the school committee that we attempt to schedule a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee in order to make a decision regarding the vacant seat. I have been very thankful for the opportunity to serve you, Brian Oxman." And I wanna thank Brian, Brian has done, he's been the chairman, he's done an excellent job for us, and I really hate, I really hate to see him leave. So, we have to take a motion.
Motion with regret.
With regret to accept the resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
And Karen, you'll get him a letter off, and, um, I think, I mean, we'll only have what about five months left in between, I do think that it is a good idea to appoint somebody for those five months.
Absolutely.
So we'll have to, we'll get together with the school committee, and we'll have to see if they have some different people at each other.
What would our normal January meeting be? Would it be the first week, or you haven't set it?
We haven't set it yet.
You have the calendar and follow it through?
But maybe before Brian leaves, or maybe we can get together and see if he has any recommendations on who he would think would do a good job on the school. Maybe get some feeler done. And now, our next one here on the agenda is to sign the Cultural Council annual funds transfer. It's, um, it's a thing that we do every year, it's a transfer of the fiscal eighteen local cultural council funds for the Mass Cultural Council, it ought to, uh, have accounts for the Cultural Council here in Brookfield. And, um, they don't have any amount, I looked at our log, there wasn't any money amount that they specified, but I would like, um, to have permission to sign this contract.
Make a motion for signature of the Cultural Council annual funds transfer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Today is the seventh?
Yes.
All right, our next one here is a contract for the CDBG Administration Services for the grant for the ADA transition plans, the senior design project, and the Hayden F. and Draper and High, and High Engineering Design Project. The grant awarded was three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and sixty, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, and to administer this grant, um, CDBG is charging us a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So I'd like permission to sign this also.
Motion to sign. Need a second?
Yes, I do. All in favor?
What this is also doing is, through that eighty-five thousand, it's actually going after more money, so it doesn't stop with the, just the grant.
Right, that committee actually has been doing phenomenal work as a team.
Yes.
In identifying, not just first stages in the process, but in continuing and stepping through the processes in order to get stuff that can go to completion.
Now, Mike has, Mike has to sign this, and then Carrie also has to sign this, so we have to have all of the signatures on it.
Madam Chairman, could you explain, explain that to the public about the eighty-five thousand and the grant?
Well, the eighty-five, that's to administer.
Yeah.
They, they manage the grant, and they're the ones that, you know, take care of most of our paperwork, and, you know, anything that needs to be done where the grant is concerned, and they, and they, you know, will pay out the money far, so they administer that grant.
First of all, they wrote the grant.
They wrote it, yes, they also, they wrote the grant far.
Which captured the three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So that's what they're charging us?
That's what they're charging us.
That's coming out of the grant, though?
That is, that's coming out of, no, that's coming out of the grant money.
Now, this is the third time we've gone for this grant on those streets over again, we don't know if we're gonna get a check.
Yes, we have it. I said Hayden F., Draper, and High.
But have we been awarded the grant, is what I'm asking you?
Yes, yes, this is what it is, I just signed the contract for that, and also what it does, it's, um, it's plans for ADA transition plan for senior center design project also.
So what are they gonna actually do on those three roads that you mentioned?
It's design of the infrastructure, I believe, but it does grease the wheels, this is how they explained it to me, is that getting this grant greases the wheels for future physical grants, for the fifth, for grants for the fiscal work, you have to go through the process.
So, this is only to do engineering, they're saying?
More or less.
This isn't gonna be actually doing any physical work that it was?
No, the next grant will take care of it.
'Cause I just had a bunch of my people sign a whole bunch of documents, I just turned them in, what, yesterday?
You didn't turn them in to me?
I turned them in to the, you know, I turned them in to Justin from the CDBG.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I was wondering, I just gave him paperwork, he didn't trust it.
What was the state that you turned in?
Um, just people in the neighborhood, uh, they lived there, they ran home.
Oh, okay.
That's why I was wondering, I just turned them in, and now you got something approved.
Incompetibility information, I think I was just...
Is that for the physical, actual work to be done in the road?
I believe it's for this grant, and then like I said, it sets the, it lays the groundwork for future grants that will be the road, that's the goal, is to get the grant for the future physical work, but you have to go through this process.
You have to have the design documents.
So this money's gonna be for designing, the drainage, and all this type of stuff?
Design.
Okay. So I just wondered why I turned, why the paperwork just got turned in, and then you got this grant already. Maybe that's for the physical grant, then.
No, this is the design, and...
Right, that's, right. And to do the design, they would have to get the documentation.
Before we get to the actual work in the road.
And the design also to do, if we can have a future senior center too.
Right, right, that's, that's part of it.
That's part of it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Next, we're gonna go on to special use permits, and these are for, uh, using the lake down Quaybach Lake, and one is the, and this is for, um, next August, and it's ninety, one is Ninety Seven Bishop's called. And another one...
Sharon, were you able to get a printout of all of the ones that we... I did, remember I handed you, at the last meeting, I handed you the spreadsheet of all of them, when we had the meeting inside the Slockens' office?
Okay.
I'll go back and look at it.
And the other one, and this is another one for, um, May of twenty eighteen, is the Blackstone Valley Bass Anglers. And the next one is for June of twenty eighteen, is the Baskin W Mass Small Boat Kayak Trail. There's three different ones, so, um, I'd like to make a motion.
You have that motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next one is to authorize Town Council to repeal recent decision by the Board of Appeals, and do we have anybody here to speak on that tonight? Mr. Conquah?
If you'd like me to speak.
You can, of course, you can come up and speak.
Do you wanna go up?
Yes, you can come up and speak.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
What'd you like me to speak about?
Well, uh, we had, I know that, Sharon, do you wanna get involved with this a little bit, too?
I've already given the parties involved all the information needed, thank you.
Okay. I know that we, that we had an appeal by the planning board, that this, what this did, when you granted this to, um, Mr. Holmes, what happened was, it's in residential district, and the appeal, you know, like overrode the zoning bylaw, and we would like to ask if you would, um, Town Council, can, um, appeal this decision that was made by...
Me, my personal opinion, Town Council was in the room, it was discussed through Ms. Mahoney's request, it went from an application of a special permit to a variance, which we had the right, you can shake your heads, no, you're both in the room, that's what happened.
I wasn't here, so I...
Oh, Beth, Beth and Sharon shaking their heads.
Actually, I wasn't in the room for that particular thing.
Well, I'm sure you saw it. The conversation was had through Town Council, we had the discussion that it could be appealed. Me personally, I don't believe the town should be paying for an appeal, if Ms. Mahoney has an issue, she can appeal it personally and spend her money. My request would be to petition Mr. Holmes to ask if he'd like to withdraw that. I don't know the procedures on repealing it through the ZBA, if we have to have another special hearing for that, I don't think we just arbitrarily do it without a hearing. But I adamantly believe enough to come to this meeting tonight that the town shouldn't be spending money on it.
Well, I know when people do appeal decisions, they have a twenty-day appeal period.
Correct.
And it is to the town clerk.
Correct.
It's to the town clerk, and I know a lot of times, if it's not the board, but my understanding, it was being made by the planning board, so, and if it's a current, if it's just a regular resident, then they have to pay for their own consent to do it, but I know a board wouldn't, they would use our town council, but the thing is, I mean, I can't really see having, hiring a separate, you know, separate firm to represent another board.
Now, there's gonna have to be some sorting out in order to verify this, because the largest challenge comes in some discussions, um, there's a lack of real clear understanding, specifically in the zoning board of appeals, about what's in our zoning laws and what's allowable, and unfortunately, the kind of on-the-fly question to the attorney, oh, just let me finish what I'm saying, Mr. Conquah, I gave you the courtesy...
You don't need to get confrontational, Beth, finish, let's go. You love to talk, and that's my biggest problem about you, finish up.
Okay, um, anyway, so, the biggest challenge there is that our zoning bylaws do not allow for the zoning board of appeals to actually issue a variance, use variance, was that...
So she can overspeak you, but I can't, do we see the hypocrisy in this meeting? Do we see the hypocrisy in this whole board, in this whole conversation? This is ridiculous, Linda, this is absolutely ridiculous, for a board to supersede a ZBA meeting on a decision where you guys chose arbitrarily, without even contacting any member of the board, to have Town Council sitting at our meeting. Town Council sitting at our meeting? I've never heard of that before in my life, to have Town Council come to a ZBA meeting.
It was my understanding that you requested that...
There was no request there. I've never requested Town, when I came to that meeting and saw Jeff sitting on the steps, I was absolutely dumbfounded, because my tax dollars, everyone's tax dollars in this room, every tax dollar in that camera is paying for someone to sit here, who gave us the advice that we could move forward with what we did. And Beth made a statement that we are ignorant. If I'm paraphrasing that, I apologize, but I'm taking it as ignorant. And we're not, because the first thing that came out of my mouth was that the bylaws are very specific. Made the comment to David, and I believe you're shaking your head because you were there, they were very specific that the town voted that they did not want that used in that district. That's where Ms. Mahoney claimed that it's not a special permit issue, it's a variance issue. We sought counsel through Town Council, he made the same statements that I said before. If Ms. Mahoney wants to appeal it, let Ms. Mahoney appeal it, don't let the Town of Brookfield appeal it. Why don't you contact Mr. Holmes and ask him if he'd like to withdraw it, or what he'd like the ZBA to do? This is ridiculous, Linda. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Although it was my understanding, okay, Sharon?
I'd like a chance to speak in this, please, because there are many misrepresentations, Mr. Comptoir, they want to process it about town bylaws.
But who, now, my understanding, I was under the impression that the zoning Board of Appeals had asked Town Council to come out. Who'd asked Town Council to come out?
I asked him, he said the Board of Selectmen.
We didn't give him permission to come out?
I didn't have Jeff's number until, I don't know if Karen or Clarence gave it to me when I was in the Selectmen's office.
Actually, actually, I think in a prior meeting, we had asked if there were meetings that had a likelihood of requiring legal advice, because we had such a high volume of kind of special instances, specifically actually zoning Board of Appeals. I think we did ask them, I, to be present, because there was a problem where, in some of the earlier zoning of appeals meetings, that the chair at the time, Mr. Wilson, had either not reached out or not, or not known what questions to ask prior to the meetings, so that there was clear delineation of what the law was with regards to those particular hearing inquiries.
But maybe those, but I don't remember, maybe, I don't remember asking, giving permission for him to come out.
I think we did.
I remember for me. Sharon, is that something maybe you could look up and see?
I don't remember. I think someone gave permission for them to contact Town Council, and if they were, I don't know, I don't remember.
I wonder if, I wonder if Nick was the one that asked him to come out?
That they've been...
Jeff Eugenio specifically stated that the directions came from the Board of Selectmen.
All right, Sharon, I don't remember giving permission.
I'll research it.
Okay, we'll research it, we'll find out.
But there's no need, it is what it is. And I don't know what Sharon's gonna share in regards to this decision. It's a yes or a no, do you provide Town Council to let the Planning Board seek?
I would like a chance to address the board to correct some of Mr. Comptoir's statements.
Okay, you have our permission.
First of all, the Planning Board's vote to appeal this decision was unanimous, five to zero. It was unanimous for the following reasons. If you watch the tape carefully, I brought up the fact that properly, Mr. Holmes should be going for a variance, because the use he wanted to make of his property was expressly forbidden in the town bylaws on the use regulation table. Mr. Blake agreed with me. He then turned to the zoning enforcement officer and said, "Properly, it would be a use variance, subject to approval by the town's bylaws, according to Mass. General Law, Section forty-eight, Chapter ten." I have a copy here. Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, Variances, reads, "Except where local ordinances or bylaws shall expressly permit variances for use, no variance may authorize a use or activity not otherwise permitted in the district in which the land or structure is located." So Mr. Blake turned to Mr. Tomo and said, "Does the town allow for use variances?" And he said, "Yes." He was incorrect. I have checked the town bylaws. The town has not adopted Section ten of forty-eight. So therefore, the ZBA had no right to issue a use variance. End of story, open and shut. It's no reflection on the ZBA that they didn't know this, although maybe they should have. Mr. Blake was asked this on the fly, and he properly asked the ZEO to check, and Nick made an incorrect statement. Unfortunately, I tried to contact Mr. Comptoir, so I could address the ZBA personally about this. I sent two notices to the Secretary of the ZBA. I had to call and ask her if that had been passed on to the Chair, because I heard nothing back. She said he'd made aware of my request. She told me that it was between him and me. So I called the Town Clerk, and I said, "Have you heard anything about whether or not I'm on the agenda?" And he said, "Mr. Comptoir came to me," and I'm paraphrasing here, "and told me that he has no issues with what happened at the meeting, so I have nothing to share with her." So I was not allowed to go on the agenda and to talk to the ZBA prior to the end of the appeal period. The reason I wanted to do this is because I've heard from Town Council that if the ZBA had withdrawn this permit prior to getting it to the Town Clerk and having him stamp it, they would have been able to do that without Town Council getting involved. I was denied the chance to speak at the ZBA meeting. The permit was given to the Town Clerk and stamped, and the only recourse now is court. And that's unfortunate. I shared this information with the Planning Board, and they agreed with me. The town is in violation of Mass. General Law and the town bylaws by the ZBA making this action. And so this is what we have to do next. And it is not a personal thing, despite what some people might think. This is a matter of good order, a matter of the town bylaws, a matter of Mass. General Law.
So we got unwound it?
And so therefore, I respectfully request that the board grant the Planning Board, not me, the Planning Board, to work with Town Council on this, to reverse this decision, and declare it annulled, according to Mass. General Law, Section seventeen judicial appeal.
Well, I feel, once you start, once they start giving out these variances, override zoning bylaws, you're gonna have people coming in here all the time and going to the zoning Board of Appeals, and they're gonna be granting, there'll be no special permit or variance. So I would, I would like to make a motion that Ms. Mahoney can go ahead and contact Town Council to appeal this decision.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I agree. What we have to do, and again, Steve's made a recommendation or suggestion with respect to unwinding it in a different way.
So through discussion, Madam Chair, we're discussing an appeal here, we're not discussing a discussion with Town Council on how to do this correctly. You're setting, you're setting a precedence that boards can appeal decisions at the expense of town taxpayers.
This is not a unheard-of process. I talked with Town Council about this.
If you were so adamant about it, Sharon, you could've reached out to me before, you've contacted me.
I did reach out to you by email, Steve, you did not respond to me directly at all. You did not give me the courtesy of a response.
You never emailed me, you've never had a problem in any other capacity to call my personal cell phone for any requests. You didn't. This is silly, Linda. This is silly board.
You don't have a choice.
So for a discussion point, I'd say that I'd like to make a, I'd like to amend the motion to say that we're authorizing all appropriate activities up to and including actually allowing Town Council to engage on behalf of the Planning Board. But if in the process of that discussion, we discover some method other than taking it to the courts...
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, may I recommend that me as the Chairman of the ZBA reach out to Town Council and see what we can do to take care of it? Which would save a lot of money to the town, as opposed to an appeal process? It would change the motion, that's why I bring it up.
Well, I just, I just proposed an amendment to the motion that we contact and find out what other alternatives.
But the motion was through Ms. Mahoney. I'd recommend that the Chair of the ZBA take care of the issue, that it's...
Madam Chair, the ZBA took care of the issue, and they took care of it incorrectly.
We took care of it with legal counsel.
I sent an email to the ZBA through the Secretary, and I never got a response. So the claim that I never contacted Mr. Comptoir was incorrect. I not only called the Secretary twice, I emailed her twice. Instead, Mr. Comptoir chose to speak to the Town Clerk about it instead of to me.
So if we go back to Beth's motion, Beth's motion was to look for a process to unwind, up and including taking it to the court if that's absolutely necessary. What Mr. Comptoir has offered is a step one, possibly, in that process. And so I'm thinking we ought to move forward with Beth's amendment to the motion. And then with that, to turn to Steve, and if Steve was willing to do, to make that telephone call to Jeff, then to report back to us as to step one, and whether or not that that's successful.
I have one more fact to add. The clock is ticking on this. The decision was made on the twenty-third. There's a twenty-day appeal period. My appeal would have to be filed on the thirteenth of November. You don't have a lot of time with this.
Hold on, I would expect...
And if you're putting this in Mr. Comptoir's hands, I'm concerned that this communication will not take place in time for an appeal to go forward, should it become necessary.
Has this board ever known me not to follow through on anything that I've ever said?
No, I know, we've worked with Steve before, and he has been good, and I believe...
We're working for the town.
And I believe that he will call, he would call, I would urge him to call immediately, call Mr. Blake tomorrow.
So if the, if it has to be filed by the thirteenth, today is the seventh.
The seventh.
Okay, so...
So that gives you six days.
Right, but in essence, I think that if Mr. Comptoir would potentially get back to yourself as the Chair by the ninth, and then if there's no other recourse, then to go ahead and authorize them to file the appeal within the timeline required under state law?
Madam Chair, I'll call Jeff on my way home this evening, if I do get him. I have his cell phone number. I'll reach out to Karen tomorrow morning when she comes in.
I can't give you the word, I know you, when you have done things before, you've been very good.
Madam Chair, if I could be copied on any email correspondence on this, so that I get it directly from Mr. Blake, I would appreciate that, because for my own, not only for my own notification, but for my board's. I don't like having to repeat something I'm told by a third party, because I might get it wrong.
That Steve is gonna talk to Jeff tomorrow.
I won't be corresponding through email, I'll be corresponding through the court.
Yeah, that's what I said, and he'll speak to Jeff, and then Jeff can, anything that comes, yeah.
And my recommendation to Jeff will be if we can have a meeting, which we can post in two days, and take care of it.
And then we'll have, you will have everything CC'd with you.
I would appreciate that, yes.
Now, wait one minute now, did you say that you would have it go through your Secretary, then to Karen, or you speak directly to Karen?
I'm gonna speak directly to Karen.
You'll speak, he'll speak. And then you can maybe authorize Jeff then to, you know, the correspondence and a letter and email to you, and then maybe...
How would you put it, in writing?
In writing, okay, to the board.
And so you still have your two, your two motions on it.
Oh, okay.
No, we dissolved one.
One, and so what, when I...
You made it one.
It's one.
And I'll make the motion that we accept Beth's amendment.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's how you're gonna do it.
Well, how else can we do it?
That's the best way to do it.
Okay, all right, so you made the amendment?
Yeah.
And I'll second that, so we'll vote on the amendment.
Do we have, Dave had his hand up?
I got a question, Steve has, Steve had a suggestion about if the applicant would come in and just maybe write something and say, if that's if he wants to, and say he wants to withdraw his application, then we'll have to go through all this. If that can be done legally, you say, "I withdraw my application."
Well, that's, I think that's what Steve's gonna check with.
Which I don't, I don't believe he can, but...
Yeah, I don't think he can.
Okay, I just thought that was simple and quick and...
I think we checked out.
We're spending enough money now on deterrence.
He's gonna call, Steve's gonna call Town Council, and then he's gonna get back to Karen, and then everything will come back, and Sharon will get CC'd, and we'll find out what's gonna go on. Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
You're gonna vote on the amendment?
Vote on the amendment. All right. All in favor, aye.
We got the main motion.
We're gonna rescind that main motion?
Yeah.
And I'd like to have a motion on that?
I think it's just, we're down back to the main motion, so we're now going to vote on the main motion, which is the amended motion.
The amended motion.
So it's just a matter of voting.
Okay. Aye. Okay, then pass.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Correspondence. Okay. No, I don't think we're gonna, does anybody have anything? Okay, Karen received this on the eighteenth, so I can have a copy, and maybe Mr. Holcraft can have a copy?
Sure.
Just about to give yellow sign?
Yep, yep, okay.
When we get this back.
This came from Mass. Dot. It was, "Dear Mr. John Holcraft, Seventeen High Street, Brookfield, Mass. Dear Mr. Holcraft, the Mass. Dot Highway Division District Three offices contacting you regarding the signage on the front of your property at Seventeen High Street, Brookfield, adjacent to South Maple Street. Upon our review, district staff has determined that a large portion of the signage is encroaching on the state highway layout. We would like to meet with you to discuss this matter in further detail, as we received a recent complaint. Please call Peter Cavatachi, District Operations Engineer, at (508) 929-3862 to schedule a site meeting at your earliest need. And very truly yours from Matt Dot, Dot, District Three, Barry J. Lorman, Acting District Highway Director." Have they been in touch with you?
Yes, we met with them, 'cause you, I guess you guys filed a complaint trying to get the sign down. Clarence, again, trying to violate my civil rights, and it's not gonna happen. So what happened was DOT did come out, and we had an hour discussion. My sign is in their layout, they have a sixty-foot layout, twenty-five feet, in my area now, is a twenty-five-foot setback from the center line, thirty-five feet on the other side. So we discussed this, and there's no safety issues, and there's no visual, you know, problems with the sign. So pretty much what he was saying is, the sign is fine, but if I wanna move it, I can, but right now, it's just gonna be there. We discussed through East Brookfield and West Brookfield, and we also discussed the elementary school fence. The elementary school fence is on state property, along with about ninety percent of the signs going up Route Nine, this way. Go through East Brookfield, it's, most of them are on state property, too. They try to be proactive, and they try to be nice to everybody, 'cause they know it's a tight area going through these little towns, but if they have to widen the road, then people would have to move their signs back at their cost. He also, we also discussed a lot of fences and other things through Brookfield, also Brookfield Motors, they're inviol, everybody's, not everybody, but a good part of the people on Route Nine are on state property. And the state doesn't have a problem with it, as long as it's not causing any traffic issues, visual or safety, like I said. So that's where we left it at. So I did a, when I put the sign in, I did discuss somebody with the state, and they said it was, as long as it's back a good ten feet, which mine is ten foot six from the curb, that's also our bylaws. But in some area, as you, every hundred-foot section on Route Nine, it changes. So one discussion came up with someone else in town, and they said possibly the cemetery gate could be on state property as well, down there, but nobody...
But that gate predates that being moved by the state, I suspect.
Well, nineteen twenty-five is when they did the state layout, this last one. So I'm just saying what somebody might have, that's what someone said. I don't know if it's true, I'm just, I'm not saying it is, but the other things I've said, you know, are in the state layout, which, I mean...
Hey, did you get, do you have anything in writing from him, with the conclusion, what they said?
No, he just had a report back and tell him what he found, and he, and he had, his job was to come back and tell me what he found, you know, to report back to me, so...
So who, so actually, who was it that you had the meeting with? Was it with this gentleman?
I don't know, it might have been...
Was it Peter Cavat...
I don't remember, I have, I have the paperwork at the house.
Could you let us...
Oh, it's not this guy, no, it's not this, no, no, no.
This Neil... It's neither one of them?
This is, this is another, this guy is from the op engineer on the paper here?
Yeah.
But that's not who came out.
Okay, how about this other one, this Barry Lorren?
Um, I don't, no, it wasn't him either.
Could you get in touch maybe with Karen and let Karen know who it is?
Yeah.
Maybe we could check back with them.
Yeah. I mean, you, you talk about this witch hunt business, Linda, this is just part of it again. I know you don't want to hear it, but it's true.
It's not a-
Am I right, Clarence?
You're right.
It's all part of the witch hunt, but-
No, I don't call it a witch hunt, I call it following the law.
Okay, so, so what you're going to do is you're going to cause an inconvenience to everybody, if, if they force me to move my sign, you're going to, you're going to cause all this money and trouble with the state and the people's businesses and lives.
One of the challenges, though, is that the sign that you're referencing on your property is not compliant with our bylaw from a standpoint of square footage.
Nope, you're wrong again.
How am I wrong?
Because it is within the square footage.
Not according to what's in our zoning bylaws?
Well, you know, you guys know you-
You're not reading the same zoning bylaw that I am.
The problem is, you people read what you want to read into the bylaws, Beth. First of all, I applied for the sign, I got a permit, and it was signed off, and the, the sign has been there since-
The sign doesn't match the permit, and I get that, and I get that, I get that there was not the political bill that-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, what do you mean the sign doesn't match the permit? Of course it does.
The sign does not match the permit.
Of course it does.
Never did.
Never did.
Yeah, it did, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to solicit from at least one of the members of the zoning Board of Appeals, if I recall the original permit on that sign, calling for it to be not the forty-eight square feet that it is. That was not what was on that bill.
It's not forty-eight square feet.
Sure, it's twenty-four each, each one, it's an eight by, it's four by eight on each side.
That's correct. And I got two permits for the sign.
Sixty-four square feet.
Yeah.
It's two separate signs, it's two separate signs, and I had two, and I paid for two separate permits, yes.
It's sixty-four square feet.
But each sign is separate, so one side is qualifying, is one side, and the other side is qualifying.
It's thirty-two square feet, and the bylaw allows sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Four by eight is the maximum you can have.
No, it's not.
The bylaw says sixteen square feet.
And it's four by eight.
Four by eight.
Sixteen is four by four.
This town signed off on it, it was approved, and that's it. It's been over ten years, so-
And will see you in court.
Then it was, then from my understanding, was that the special permit expired?
Nope, the special permit, that's again, you're reading the permit wrong, you're reading the, you're reading what you want to read into it, Linda.
I guess we are, because under chap- chapter twenty-three B, I am recusing myself from further conversation on-
Yeah, Mr. Snyder can't be involved, so.
So, the sign is in my permit, if you read the permit carefully, it doesn't say I have to go before the town every two years, Linda.
So wait a second, this topic on the agenda was referenced just this, correct?
That's right.
We're done.
So that's what's, that's where the sign stands, and that's the way that it's reading.
Okay, well, we'll just-
I'll get you that, I'll get your gentleman's name if you want it.
Yes, I would like the gentleman's name to-
And you guys, and, and it's not about using departments and boards against boards, Clarence himself as a select board is using the ZBA board to go after, after my sign.
He's doing this as a private citizen.
No, he, the town is paying all these attorney bills, this town is going to be spending-
He's paying, now he's-
No, he is not paying Jeff Blake to go to all these court cases.
So wait a second, so-
You're wrong, Linda, you're wrong.
So wait a second, wait a second.
The town's paying for this.
Wait a second, just, just, this, this has, this discussion does not have any place in open meeting.
It doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with this here.
No.
All I was saying, Mr. Snyder did this as a resident of the town of Brookfield. He didn't do it.
I appealed.
He appealed it.
And the zoning board approved it.
Picked it up.
And the zoning board is an independent body.
Right, and they picked it up, and they, and they, and then their taxpayers are going to be paying all these attorney bills.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and it's going to multiply two police crews as when we get done, so.
All right, well, we're done with this, because all of that I did-
Okay, I know you don't want to hear the truth, and you don't want the taxpayers to know what's going on in the town.
That's not it.
Oh, it is, Linda.
We would love, we would love to let them know the truth, but unfortunately, our hands are tied by the fact that it's currently in court.
And that's what they told, that's what I told them.
I don't, Beth, I don't think, I don't think this board could tell the complete truth, if they had to.
Okay, Dave, that's enough, the only-
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm talking too much truth, I'm sorry.
I just read what Mass Dot sent to you, and it didn't need to bring on a whole discussion criticized in the Board of Sorts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, if there isn't anything else on the agenda, I would like to move that we adjourn the meeting at, um, eight oh five.
You have a motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.